...bargaining. So at this point, I'd like to open tonight's school committee meeting. First order of business on the agenda is minutes from previous meetings. Do I hear a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I have one little tweak.
Yeah, by all means.
It's just a little tweak that makes it sound nicer. So in the fourth paragraph, I think it said that we work with representatives of board of selectmen, blah, blah, blah. And then the last sentence said, "Next time you see a member of the board of selectmen, please thank them." But it's in the wrong paragraph. It makes it sound like, sort of like, we're being bracked because I was really meant it to be after we received the additional 227.
I will amend the motion to say motion to approve the minutes as amended by Mary Branley.
Modified motion on the floor. Do I have a second on the modified motion?
I'll second it.
Mary, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Chairperson's report. A couple orders of business that I do want to inform the community on. First, I was incredibly pleased to attend the MEF spring celebration today at the golf course. Absolutely fantastic opportunity to celebrate teaching and learning here in the Maynard Public Schools and reflect on both the members of the community, the members of the MEF, including the board of directors, and everyone involved to really put the best interests of Maynard Public Schools forward. There were some excellent grants that were funded this year, both from the student-based senior project perspective, but also from the curricular and instructional perspectives. We heard things on curriculum design around technology and engineering. We heard about STEM boxes in the kindergarten classrooms. There's just a lot of really cool things that are being funded because of the efforts of the Maynard Education Foundation. Also, a really cool moment, we had a former superintendent from the district, Dr. Kennedy, who was in attendance, and he was actually one of the people who were the driving force behind creating the MEF so many years ago. I believe the word nineteen was thrown around, nineteen years ago for the MEF?
Two thousand.
Twenty. Yeah, two thousand it was, yeah. So it was eighteen years, sorry.
Okay. Perfect. So, I mean, the amazing thing is-
It's been a long day.
It's only getting longer. So, I mean, just celebrating teaching and learning, a lot of money being put back into the schools, and it's absolutely fantastic. Next order of business to report on is executive session. We had the opportunity to sit down, both Dawn and I and Dr. Girardi, with the other members of the school committee, and discuss the results of our collective bargaining process with the Maynard Education Association. And I'm really happy to report that we've reached agreement. We unanimously ratified a new three-year teaching contract for the Teachers Association tonight. We're going to be reaching out to the Teachers Association president once the final draft contract is drawn up to get the official signatures on the document. But we had the good fortune of having the Teachers Association ratify earlier today, and then we ratified on our side during executive session earlier tonight. So that's really exciting. There's some really excellent things for the students of Maynard going forward. Some really good language around curricular design and opportunities for teachers, and I'm really excited to see what happens over the course of this contract that will go into effect next school year. So at that point, I believe that's my chairperson's report. So, Dr. Girardi, what do you have for us?
So I too want, I was in attendance at the Maynard Education Foundation's spring celebration of teaching and learning. Amazing to see our student presentations, our teacher presentations. Great to meet Don Kennedy. He's still, he's actually still working through NESDEC or NIESC, one of those organizations.
NESDEC, yeah.
Which is pretty amazing. And also Jim McCann, to honor him as well, because I think he was the first MEF president as well, and one of those driving people, along with Mary. She was around. She was, she was part of that, too.
Around back then.
So it was really wonderful to celebrate that.
They're still around. Mary, look at you.
And we do have amazing students and staff. It just reiterated all the amazing work we're doing. I was actually hoping to do a preview of the Leading the Nation website, and I realized that only some of those amazing technological advances that the teachers are doing are on that website. We still have more to build. So this website will be continued to use, to build and show all these wonderful things that teachers are doing in the classroom, in the field. But I did want to also share that thanks to the Maynard Education Foundation, they also give grants to administrators. And I wrote a grant to have a luncheon for our community and business leaders for part of the senior project. So the senior project will be tomorrow. They always have a luncheon, but now we also invited other business and community members, and we will be having some special guests. We will be having Senator Jamie Eldridge, Representative Kate Hogan, several associate commissioners of education, particularly in the field of Chapter 74 programming, pathways programming, which I don't know if that's coincidental, but since we have an active application, we're kind of excited about that. And I've offered to give them a tour of the building and our TV/radio studio before the actual event. So a lot of exciting things happening, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education are bringing their media with them. So it's going to really highlight all of the wonderful things that Maynard is doing, our wonderful students. We will obviously have some speeches, and it'll end up with Jean Lebel and Paul Orzick, our wonderful senior project co-coordinators, who will explain the senior project for the Department of Ed and for everybody who's there. So it's really going to be a moment for Maynard to shine, all the good stuff we do. But that Leading the Nation website will carry on that good word about all the good things that are happening. And even, and so just really wanted to focus on how exciting that is and the fact that we're going to have those major folks at our building tomorrow. I also would like to, I hope we could, when we see Jamie Eldridge, to thank him because the Senate just passed a version of the budget that includes fully funding Circuit Breaker, which has been, I just saw Michelle's head pop up. I didn't get a chance to tell her that. That, you know, we, well, you know, again, credit to Mary Branley and Mary Mersch and Justine St. John, who had talked to Representative Hogan about that. It's good to see that that's happening. So I wanted to credit you folks on our budget subcommittee for knowing that that was a need and then being part of the constituency that actually made it happen. So that's really exciting news, and we should all thank him when we see him tomorrow. And hopefully that moves forward and it gets funded. So that's my positive news for the night.
Excellent. So, moving on, I'm not seeing our student representatives in the room tonight.
I think they had an NHS thing.
Yeah, I know. I saw Olivia at the MEF celebration.
She's the big fundraiser for her senior project.
They're right there.
Did you make it back?
Wait, what?
No. Other students. We have other students in the audience.
It's just a rumor.
So we're going to move on from that. We're going to open citizen comment. I'm using my wait time.
You're a teacher.
Okay, so, moving on. Let's talk activity fees.
So I'd like to read something that I put together with some parents. On May 4th, Principal Seller, Kevin Caruso, and a group of concerned parents met with me about the reduction in the middle school sports. The concerns raised include the following. Middle school sports support the school community, the school committee's core values and provide students with opportunities outside of the traditional classroom to apply learning, be healthy, be safe, develop character, and develop leadership. The local youth programs do not provide the same amount of time on task and the level of student development that middle school sports programs provide. And I think that was one of the things that we kind of missed when we were making that decision. The solution, one of the solutions that Principal Seller and her teacher leaders developed was adding an intramural program at no cost by reorganizing the homework club. According to her, the fourth and fifth graders still believe that homework is a club. The sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, not so much. But there are some kids who could benefit from a homework club. So instead of having three teachers doing sixth, seventh, and eighth grade homework clubs separately, they'll have one teacher doing sixth, seventh, and eighth combined, which will free up two teachers to do the intramural sports. So that was, you know, one of the brainstorming things that Principal Seller and the teacher leaders worked on together.
That's great.
And then the idea was also discussed, though, of the Maynard activity fees and could they be raised to offset the costs of middle school sports. And so, you know, we talked about the fact that the bus fees have been raised in the past, and the activities have stayed the same for approximately fifteen years. I'm not sure exactly how many years it's been, but it's about thirteen to fifteen years. And of course, all expenses related to running activities, sports, from transportation to equipment have increased year after year, but the activities remain, fees have remained the same. Even with increased activity fees, it was identified that that would still be much less expensive than the private lessons or club costs, you know, especially if you look at sports like hockey, but even other sports, or even, you know, instrumentals. Getting that, going to a private lesson is pretty expensive compared to the fees. The philosophy in Maynard of having one fee for unlimited activity and athletic participation was designed to encourage students to participate in middle school activities and support the school community value that students who are busy after school have more successful outcomes. So that philosophy that was started fifteen years ago, we agreed with it. I mean, it makes sense to try and get kids active in whatever activities that they have an interest in. The current activity fees have been graduated. At Maynard High School, the fee has been $400 for the first student, then $200 for every additional student for families with more than one student. At the Fowler, the fee has been $200 for the first student and $100 for additional students for the same family. And at both Maynard High School and Fowler, there's a reduced fee for families on free and reduced lunch. And I think Colleen had put out this form, Justin, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
This is the form that we share with parents. It spells all that out. It's always been graduated like that. The sixth grade students have music opportunities one day a week as opposed to athletic programs, which are four days a week. And they do have yearbook drama, WAVMS activities, but they don't have as many activities as the seventh through twelfth graders do.
Right.
And that was something we acknowledged. So the thing that we considered in order to bring back middle school sports was to raise the activity fee to $400 for all students in grades seven through twelve, with the $200 fee for additional children and families, and continue offering the reductions for free and reduced lunch. When we brainstormed this together, we just felt that keeping the fee at $200 for sixth grade students might make sense because they have less options. And then one idea that I thought was really great was, I don't think the parents want to see this back year after year as a budget issue, right? So they said to help prevent that, wouldn't it make sense to have like a 2% automatic increase every year? Because that's roughly the CPI index. Things go up about 2% a year. And that way, in the future, we wouldn't have to be worrying about the fee not increasing with the cost. So I thought that was a pretty unique recommendation. And the parents offered to investigate similar programs like Remembering Maynard's Own, which only works for high school students right now, or maybe asking them to change their bylaws. But they're interested in doing something. Whether they do it on their own or see if Remembering Maynard's Own would like to include middle school now that the fees were raised, is something they were willing to explore. They were also willing to, you know, consider like a middle school boosters program or something like that because the parents really valued it. That met with me, and so I thought that was awfully nice of them to offer these sort of things. I've talked with our finance director. She felt that those additional fees would allow us to add middle school sports back into the budget for next year. And she also thought that the annual increase would make the middle school sports financially viable in the future, so we wouldn't have to be doing this every year. So both she and I are recommending to the school committee that we reinstate middle school sports and increase the activity fees as we just recommended. And I see a lot of people in the audience who would probably, who were at that meeting with me, and we'd love to have them speak if they'd like to.
I'm happy to speak. I never said. I'm Anne Jackowitz.
Hi, Anne.
I have three kids, two at Fowler, and one at Greenbelt. And my son William, he's one of those kids who's in band and plays two sports. So every year, I kind, not every year, this year, I thought, wow, I'm paying $200 bucks for waiting to play two sports if that's more than five days a week and band once a week. I pay $160 for him to play basketball, and he practices once, two times a week and plays one game a week. Or soccer, which is $95 per season, and he plays one game a week, one friend a week. So, you know, I was one of those parents thinking this is a really good deal. I don't think, can't believe this is so cheap. I have friends at Ansa who are paying $330 a season for sports, so they're paying almost $1,000 for your kids who are playing two sports, which is significant. I have friends in other school districts who have like a $2,400 family cap. Other towns paying, you know, $400 for a year, paying $200 per season. And so, you know, thinking this is, we have a really good deal, but I'm getting away with some of them. And so when I found out about middle school sports being cut, William found out, came home, heard it at school, came home and was devastated because sports means more to him right now as a 12, 13-year-old than school does. The friendships he makes, the teamwork, the mentorship he gets from coaches. You know, I know I don't need to sell you guys on that, but having a 12-year-old, when your kids turn 12, you'll see, like, that means a ton when you have a kid who's into sports. He's also super into gaming, and that's a really important part of his life as well. And I'm fortunate, I feel fortunate that a Maynard can vote, and he can vote easily. But I just think that getting rid of sports at this age, when the kids need something to do, this spring, William's not playing sports. He's not playing a town sport or a school sport, and he's lost. He comes home, he's bored, it's a fight on screen turns, a fight on his spot. You know, every morning, he'll get on his bike and see some friends, but he's lost. And this winter, he wasn't lost. His fall was lost because every day, he goes home to a sport. He loved it. He's getting home from waiting at six o'clock at night and, you know, getting his homework done, learning how to time manage, you know, and learning what it means to be on that bus with kids after a loss and feeling really down, but, you know, getting back and going back to the field the next day. It's just really, really important at this age. And I think it's also really important for a leader program at the high school. My husband Mark is very, very involved with the travel, the youth travel basketball program. He actually helps run it, put a club. And he coached all three kids, our three kids. He coached kids that weren't even our kids this year. And the first thing he said was, Paul, how is that gonna work? These kids aren't going to be, you know, developing for these two years going into high school. And that high school program's running toward this town. The fact that they've done so well, I thought brought a huge sense of community and pride in our town. And I know it brought a lot of pride in my, you know, with William. We went to all those games, and it was like, wow, Mom, I play seventh grade basketball. I could be on that team one day. So I think it's, you know, taking away the opportunity from these kids who need this at this time. They're going to be a lot more lawyering downtown, you know, with these kids, both boys and girls. I'm not speaking from the boys' perspective, but it's super important. You know, I was part of the PTO, I was one of the people on the PTO that brought teenagers to here. We had 225 parents and students in the audience, most students were middle schoolers. And it talked about the effect of, you know, these kids aren't outside playing anymore. They're not outside, you know, putting on teeth. They're sitting home and addicted to electronics. So it's yet another thing. If we take away these sports from these kids at this vulnerable age, they need to be outside. They need to be on these teams, getting that experience. So I plead, plead to you to consider what we're requesting because it's, yes, it's a significant increase, but the fact, I mean, when Rob told us in that meeting, it hasn't been raised for 15 years, like, that's crazy. The bus fees have been, everything has been raised. On the PTO, you know, I know the cost of buses for field trips. Every year, it's gone up.
Yep.
And the PTO subsidizes the buses so kids can take field trips, but we can't subsidize at all because I know that cost. So I know for sports, like, that's, it's crazy. It hasn't gone up because we can't expect the school to subsidize the cost of every bus for a school sport. So I just plead as a parent, and, you know, my daughter's Natalie, she's going to be in seventh grade soon. If it goes away this year, it's not going to come back. You know, next year, it'll say, oh, that's not part of it. And Natalie, I think his parents, what we talked about, too, a lot of parents out there, needing happy on their children who are in the pipeline, like, your kids, you know, they're going to be in seventh grade. It's just a really, really important part of this school. So, yeah, if we get them. So anyway, that's my plea to you.
So I don't know if this might help things along. I just, I can't, I don't feel that this is going to be too controversial, since it seems like you found a very excellent solution with the help of the parent group. So I love that you collaborated. It sounds like we have a good solution. I will just put it out there. My kid told me the other day, Mom, I'm just not sportsy. But I could not support this more. So my kid will never be there, and that's not what this is about.
There's a lot of kids who aren't, you know.
So I will make a motion to approve the activity fees presented in hopes of preserving middle school sports. I just love that you came up with something. It's certainly nothing any of us want to see on the cut list, it had been on prior years but never made it to the final, because nobody wants to do it. But it does show you that we're running out of these to cut. Because in prior years, we'd get not past the first draft of funds. So I'll make that motion. It was long-winded, just take the precedence.
So, question of clarification. So you're making the motion to approve all of the small details as laid out by Dr. Girardi?
New activity fees.
Perfect. I'll second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
I am absolutely in favor of keeping sports and commend all you guys for meaning that. My only hesitance is that 2% increase, because I'm not sure that, three years down the road, this sends a message that no matter what happens, this is going to stay on. And I'm not sure that we can guarantee that. So I just looked at it. It's for an extra 2% every year because up to $1,600 a year. That's not enough to maybe keep it from, you know, from the young people. So I'd like to recommend that we just do this for a year and just see how things happen.
So would you like to amend the motion?
No, I think the process, the proper procedure is, so that's fair. I won't amend the motion because I don't tend to write, and that's not a big deal.
Yeah.
So we can vote this one. It'll either pass or fail, and we can do another motion. So you're going to give it.
I mean, if everybody is okay with that, I'm just sending my thought.
Your concern.
I'm concerned that next year, it will end up.
And maybe everyone else is, too, and it gets way down.
Yes, totally. It's really right to follow.
I have a concern. I, well, first of all, I love, I love that the parents brought this to us, worked with us to come up with this plan.
Absolutely.
And I firmly believe in, you know, keeping middle school sports. You know, research shows it's more important that a kid feels engaged in something sort of after school. It's not necessarily the academic stuff that leads so long to our academic success. What I worry about, just in looking at equity across the town, I know we have the reduced fees for families that meet the federal income guidelines, but I would love to know, and I don't, I don't know what it's looked like in years past when we had the visa place, but I always worry about, we are a community, and I want every kid who wants to play, you know, Maynard, you know, sports at Fowler, do band, that they're able to do it. And are we able to, you know, like, does this place undo hardship on some of our families who might be struggling already to make the fees the way they're done?
So Kevin's here, and he did talk to the group about it, but if you'd like, he could explain about Remembering Maynard's Own, which is why the parents said, well, we'll look at how we can do some version of that. But there's a lot of good news there. Your concerns will be answered once Kevin speaks.
So, geez.
Kevin, I didn't know you had that kind of pice.
I'm just going to stand back here. So Remembering Maynard's Own, like Dr. Girardi said, in their charter, it works for nine through 12 students. And I haven't yet seen a student be rejected. All they have to do is write a, you know, a 150-word essay, and they approve it. And then for the middle school, because it's not in their charter, all that they have to do is write an email to the principal. And again, the principal, you know, gets some information, and again, always, 100%, you know, if there is an undue hardship, there's no question asked. So, you know, I would be comfortable in saying that, you know, if there was a hardship, you know, with the raised fee, or even as the fee is now, that they're going to be able to, you know, play. And I think the parent group and their willingness to create another middle school-type support, financial support group would help that as well. So I think that, you know, there are plans in place to, you know, service those kids that would be, have a hardship.
I think that that does address my concerns. I just always, I mean, I grew up at a time where you didn't pay to play sports.
Right.
Or do music. And everybody in a public school had access to those things. You didn't pay for the bus. And so I feel like if we're increasing fees, too, it's important to bring that from us on the town side to say, listen, we're paying high taxes. You know, folks who live in Maynard are paying high taxes already, and these are all the extra things that they're paying for, too, that, you know, maybe 20 years ago, they weren't paying for. But looking out for equity, I think, is really important, particularly with this, because for kids, you don't want the gap between the haves and the have-nots to widen. And I feel like particularly for kids where sports is so important to their lifelong success, I want everybody to do that.
Further discussion?
Thank you for that, because that was a concern. So thank you to everybody.
So at this point in time, we do have Dawn's original motion, which I seconded on the table, which was to adopt the change in activity fees as laid out in the memo that was sent to us prior to the meeting and explained by Dr. Girardi. So at this point in time, I would like to call a vote on that initial motion. So, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 4-1. Thank you.
Can I just make one more comment, too? As far as, I know that the efforts are, the efforts that the Maynard's Own makes in really trying to get donations and that, and they do an incredible job, but like so many people in this room, it's a core group. And if they're adding another 200 potential kids, you know, like, the pool is going to get bigger. So if, to either, you know, help them as they stand or to create a real bona fide, you know, the conversation is always, oh, yeah, we're going to, we're going to do this. And then people go away and get busy, and they don't. I would just ask you to really, you know, push hard to create another, another group at the middle school so that they're not getting stretched. And it's a great group of people that really work on Maynard's Own. I'm going to give them an awful lot of credit.
Agreed.
So I think you make a really good point. Like, we have a one-year solution. We can't promise anything regardless of the 2% or not, which is why I was like, eh.
Okay, well, I, the wording, the wording that was here, it looks to me as though we've drawn a line in the sand that now that's going to be off the-
Yeah, I mean, we could unfortunately be in the same situation next year. But I think to your point, if we get a group of parents who want to volunteer and add their efforts to Remembering Maynard's Own or create a subchapter, or some, whatever it ends up being. But you're right, like, words are great, and we have a plan, but it needs to, for us not to be in this situation next year, people will need to step up, and we always appreciate that. Everyone in Maynard steps up. I could have had someone who's not doing something.
And everybody in this room, I can, you know, everybody's on committee.
So if it's missing in the right way, it's right.
Just have to really make it happen, so.
I gotta say, that's, that seems to be the new way. I was talking to a friend in New Jersey who's literally in a district where there's three to $10 million homes, and they have booster clubs for their sports, and they just cut their arts program. I mean, yeah, I mean, I was just like, I mean, it's just-
Thank goodness for boosters.
It just seems to be like we're, this is, we're in a different era with trying to make things work.
We are. So Colleen, I would like to make a note in the minute, so if you can, in some small way, highlight Mary Branley's concern, because I do think it's something that we need to incorporate into our policies and our procedures to revisit this on an annual basis. So I think that that just becomes our new operating plan. You know, every year, when we reconsider buses and everything else, we reconsider activity fees as well. Absolutely. Hi, Anne.
I just made one thing. I don't know what the exact number is, but I don't believe it's like 200 kids, because it's about 50, 50s for soccer, and then maybe another 30, not, no, like, maybe 30-ish for basketball, but there's lots. So I don't know what that number, you know, plays out, but it's definitely under 150. You know, I would imagine it's under 150, which is still, you know, it's a big thing.
And again, you know, to Mary's point, it kills me that, that parents pay twice. You know, you have your kids in the school system, and you're paying real estate taxes, which we all know aren't cheap. And then you're also, and every chance I get, I bring it up to people. It's like, do you realize that people with kids in schools, they're also paying bus fees, maybe to $1,000. They're also paying activity fees, maybe to $1,000 that everybody else doesn't even, you know, they have no clue, so.
But the fact is, I mean, I think as parents, we talked about, like, Mary, you were saying great about connectivity, but so what is it? Is it so no one does it?
Right.
You know, and I think if you have parents who are willing to do that, yes, I'm happy with taxes, but I also, we decide to stay in Maynard. I want my kids to have this. And if there's a parent who's something we can do about it, that's, I mean, that's my opinion. But, yeah, I don't want to pay twice, but.
I also just want to quickly say, I was a comp with Carlisle, graduated in 1993. My parents paid $150 for me to play field hockey in 1993 in Concord.
Really?
And so, Mary, I don't know how old you are, where you grew up. Maybe where you were, they didn't have that.
Yeah.
But it's not a new thing.
Right. Ah, New Hampshire.
A free guy.
One sport in 1993, one sport in Concord.
Might be just ask that, too. I think in terms of readdressing this next year, because it is a fear of ours. You know, we were hoping to get this guaranteed over the next couple of years, but I think we have to remind ourselves, we know the value of sport. We've talked about that.
We do, absolutely.
Talking about that. But every year, you have, you have the fields, you have the courts, you have the coaches ready to go, you have the equipment. And most importantly, you have students ready to do that. And you have fifth and sixth graders watch those seven, eight, 13 teams. You know, so I always take a step back and say, what if we were here trying to create a program?
Right.
This thing called basketball and soccer. What should we do? What are we willing to do as a committee to get this thing going? I think we would do anything. So to remember is we're already there. There's a field out there, a court right there, this coach is ready to go. And most importantly, you have, like Anne just said, 70- And most importantly, you have, like Anne just said, seventy, eighty kids out of two hundred who are ready to go and ready to play this basketball or soccer. So all we have to do is find twenty thousand dollars. And that to me is like, we're ninety-five percent of the way there. We created this great sport, basketball and soccer, kids are excited. Let's find some money to feed that program, that's all we have to do. So what, I don't mean to simplify it.
Nope, you're absolutely right, and it is incredibly important, and we do. It's just, if you had been here two weeks ago when we had to come up with two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of cuts and we're talking about teachers and we're talking about programs and we're talking about paraprofessionals, those are the, that's where we have to say, okay, what is at the core of education? And, and yes, sports are a part of that, absolutely, but those are the decisions that, you know, unfortunately.
Yeah, and I, I know for a second, th- those are difficult decisions, but I don't pretend I understand those completely. But I think sports, when you're looking at a character-based education, academics in a classroom, the teacher talking to twenty-two students, can only, is, can only go so far. It's, it's bringing those skills and those adversity, perseverance, winning, losing from two-third to four-third, out in the field and on the court. I just wanna make sure we're not undervaluing the benefit of sport.
Yeah.
Whatever that may be, whether it's basketball or chess, I don't think we even afford the luxury to, to look away on those.
I think, you know, one of the things I will say, and you might not be here often enough to see that I generally don't hand out compliments all the time, it's just not why I guess.
You hand out hugs, not compliments.
Not yet.
Uh, but what I was really pleased with is, I had sort of two weeks away from school committee for some personal reasons, so I knew about the cut and then I dialed back into school committee probably this morning and I was really happy. And Bob gets so much crap, right, and that's his job, really, like to take all the crap. But I was so happy to say, how did this all get worked out? And to hear that he met with people, like he, there were times we can give him some credit, you know, and I feel like this is one of those, like, he is superintendent that you might not find in, I'm not picking on his younger girl. But like, no, sure she's a good life. But like, my point is like, one of the things about Maynard is you can meet with the head honcho and try to work out a problem. And I wish we could all remember that, because we all really, not you guys, like you guys are great. Uh, see, I'm working on my thing. Anyway, I was really happy to see, like, after being out of the loop for two weeks on something that I was like, oh, that's gonna major, that's gonna be a major problem.
Yeah.
To know that he took those steps. So I just, I don't often publicly, uh, but, uh, I just really appreciate you working it out. We knew this was gonna be a thing, that's why we did want, wanted other years.
So we've had a couple of hands out in the audience. So I'm gonna go to the young lady in the red first and then I'll come to the young lady in the purple. So come on up, what's on your mind?
Um, so we're here as part of a history project, actually. It's called Project Citizen. We're both in tenth grade at Maynard and we're looking into like how the school prioritized, what's it, like spends money on and how, like, we can improve it. So we're just kind of wondering how exactly, like, middle school sports costs on average.
How much they cost?
Yeah.
Since Maynard's so small compared to other schools.
It's about twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
No, that's, no, that's, that's the key, so that's about.
Yeah.
We've gotta ask Michelle this.
Above and beyond.
Yeah.
How much does it cost?
If you, you know what I think might be good? If you wanted to come to our office, Michelle and I could actually give you documents, because I know we've prepared those analyses in the past. Um, the, the, the fees cover about thirty percent of the sports and then the general funds cover the rest of it. Uh, that's roughly what it is, but we can give you exact numbers so you can have that if you want it.
Yeah.
You know, you can just tell Principal Carrigan that you need to see me.
All right. And then also, since the activity fees cover thirty percent, like you said, what exactly, since the jerseys and the, and the coaches and the, they're all there, so where does like the money go exactly? Like, other than buses and coaches and stuff like that?
Like if, if you cut it.
The athletic director?
What?
Kevin, would you like to explain, like, the biggest cost drivers and what, where the money goes?
Thank you ladies. So, um, the coaches' salaries are in the, in the budget and each coach roughly makes around thirty-five hundred dollars. Michelle, right?
Ten more.
Yeah, thirty-five to thirty-seven hundred dollars.
There's, uh, coaches are paid on a step scale as well and, um, also with lanes.
Right. I think they're all on step three, so they're, you know, they, they earn the highest pay that, according to the contract, which is probably around thirty-seven hundred dollars per coach. So you figure, uh, two coaches for, um, one for boys soccer, one for girls soccer, uh, boys basketball, girls basketball, softball and baseball. So you can do the math, I'm not a, I'm not a math person, so it's thirty-seven hundred times.
Kevin, I just wanted to say, there, there are coaches who make significantly more than thirty-seven.
Well, not the middle school, middle school.
Oh, middle school, okay.
So the, for middle school sports, it's around thirty-seven hundred.
Sorry, we were talking globally, because the question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was talking about all, I was thinking all sports.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
Yeah, so there are some coaches, some varsity, the varsity coaches and JV coaches, they do make more than the, the middle school coaches. Um, so, you know, that's one cost. And then the largest cost is actually the busing cost. Um, for a trip to Lincoln Sudbury, the, I base, I think the base fee this year is thirty-five, I mean, three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, you know, and that's ten minutes down the road. And, and then so, and I've had a bus cost to, to Murdoch cost six, seven hundred dollars. So, you know, the bus cost would probably be the next highest cost. And then after that, you have the officials' fees. Um, they charge around anywhere from seventy dollars per game to ninety dollars per game. So when you, when you figure, when I do the budget, you know, half the games are home, half the games are away, so you just multi, you just figure out the multiplication that way. Um, and then you have the equipment costs that get purchased every year, which is, which is minimal, so. The big, the biggest one would be salaries and the, the bus fee and then the officials.
But you do have a replacement schedule on equipment.
Yeah, the equipment.
And then there are times when the boosters do actually provide extra money for special equipment or special things, um, and.
I just have a question when you're done.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we have a queue, so you're now second in line.
I'll be there.
So I actually have all that, that information, so if you girls wanna come see me tomorrow, I can, I have it all on a spreadsheet, so.
Excellent.
Thank you Kevin. Um, going to the, the young lady in the purple back there, I believe, purple? Yes, okay.
Yeah, good eyes.
Hi, so, um, this is actually unusual for me to be here, I don't usually come to school committee meetings, but I came to the last budget meeting last year to share my opinions. And so I understand how much goes into a school budget. My parent, my mother is a teacher, so I hear a lot from behind the scenes at her school, what goes into this, what. I understand the importance of guidance and the other programs that are on the table as well, but I would love to see, I'd love to see the solutions that we're trying to come up with to save middle school sports, because I actually don't get involved in high school sports. I'm out, I am a figure skater outside and as someone who does that sort of sport, I do of course know the values of sports, but it's a lot more expensive, there's a lot more barriers. If you're forced to leave the school for that kind of sport, I'm not going to share the exact cost, but trust me, it's outrageous. And so I, I know that for my parents, if they could pay a four hundred activity dollar activity fee and be done, even if they have to pay for some other equipment here and there, I know how, how much easier it is for them to deal with my brother's baseball and I see the value he gets out of it, I see the friends he's making, I see the connections he's making within school that as much as I love my skating friends, it is more difficult to really get to know your community when you're not consistently involved. And paying for middle school sports helps kids ma, keep that connection and get to know their, their peers the way they know, because those peers will be their friends. And I just, I know the va, the value of sports and I know the value of community and, and taking away, combining those is the most powerful compared to trying to separate them. It just, like, I know how many people know each other from outside activities and I think the activity fee is worth the cost relative to what you have to lose if you don't have those opportunities.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just have two questions.
Sure.
One, are the buses required? Or is that something that if this come up, came up on the table again next year, could we say, you know, that kids need to ride their own transportation to sports? I don't know if there's a rule with that, I know it's part of the camaraderie and everything, but I didn't know if that was something that's required when you play.
For inter, so your question is around interest classed sports?
Correct.
Right. And buses, okay, cool.
So that also creates a barrier for kids who don't have transportation, so that's one piece of.
I know Aunt Stackwood said that she would be like an Uber mom.
Does she have a van? And I will, and I, I will tell you that Kevin's been pretty creative and he's been working with the town to see if there's a possibility that maybe some of the town vans, if they're not used, could be used for sports so we can save money there. So the administration is always looking at ways to save money. Uh, there's also the liability issue, um, but I, you know, I don't think there's a hard and fast rule. I think there are things to be concerned about with not providing the transportation. But I do wanna thank Kevin, because he was just emailing the interim town administrator about some creative, potential creative solutions for those times when we have a group of fifteen kids going to a competition on a weekend and the, and the town isn't using some of their buses. So he's actually working on a creative solution to save a little bit of money anyway.
And you said you had a second question also?
Oh, yeah.
My question was, did we, so I got a little lost in the details of all the activity fees, but so is it, is it gonna be like four hundred dollars and still an all-access pass so you can be banned with soccer and basketball?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so primarily, we were looking at changing the structure of the middle school fees, because historically, um, the middle schoolers at seventh and eighth grade level paid half the fee of the, the high school students. So we're looking at leveling that out more so, but also keeping some of the protections in place for larger families where subsequent students pay a reduced rate, still the concern for our low-income families or other concerns. So all of the, the previous protections that were in place still exist, but the, the, the initial outlay in terms of dollars is changing slightly. And then I saw another hand in the back, forgive me. Oh, yeah, sure, fire away.
So for the bus, oh, um, for the bus, I think it's really important for people to have a bus, because someone said before that, that like teaches you, you stay on a bus with someone and you go through that loss together and it's just kinda like you regroup and then you go back out at the next game. But then, I, so I play softball and I have a bag like this big, so then you kinda need the bus for space and town vans. Like, we travel with the varsity baseball team, they take up the whole bus and then we're stuck doubling up in the back. But it's all good, because if both teams lose and you just work on it together, so I think it's really important. I think it's really important for, like, a bus, because you just, you just learn more.
Cool, thank you.
I'm sure Mr. Crusoe will talk to the baseball team about it.
About hogging the seat to the front.
Friendly reminder, you're carrying bats too. Trish, hi Trish.
Hello, how are you, Justin?
Oh, living the dream, Trish.
I'm not getting to be wearing your dress.
It's okay.
If you could remember the original meeting?
I said that, we were on it together.
How scared we were to go with that set fee of four hundred dollars.
Right.
We were, it was outrageous and we said it's higher than daycare, it's higher than bus cost, it's higher than all of these. And we kept saying adamantly, it has to be, because it's gonna stay, it has to stay, it has to be really high. We're almost in the same scenario now, where we gotta do something.
Yeah.
But how many years did we think we're gonna be reassessed in this every year? And it hasn't happened.
Well, what it turned, what happened, which was unexpected circumstances that were positive, is that, um, parents were like, I'm paying four hundred dollars, you are gonna participate every single season, so I'm gonna get the best bang for my buck. So it was great, it was perfect that way.
They were getting their pennies worth.
Exactly. So we had our fingers crossed that that's what the parents would say.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Yes?
So, um, I'm Denise Walsh, I'm hopefully next year as middle school basketball girls' coach. Um, and I just wanted to make two points. One is, we talked about, someone mentioned haves and have-nots. So without middle school sports, then you have AAU. And so now you're gonna have families who can afford AAU, they're gonna play all those sports. And those who can't afford AAU have nothing. They have the youth programs, which are great, they're one night a week, they're one day on the weekend, they're one practice. So now you really are gonna create the haves and the have-nots.
Right.
Because those AAU sports are thousands of dollars.
Yes, they are.
And middle school sports is gonna be four hundred. So I, I just want you to keep that in mind. And the second point had to do with the cuts. They're brutal decisions and we all understand that. I think what some people were a little concerned about is that there didn't seem to be discussions about options before this was just, this cut was just made. Um, I'm great, it's great that we all came to that conclusion, but I think we would have liked to have seen maybe some more discussion about how can we not cut that sport before it was cut? So I don't know, I know you're looking at numbers and you have to make the cuts, but I think a few of us just wanted to see a few more options and discussions, maybe reaching out to the community to say, okay, here's what's on the chopping block, anybody have any suggestions? So I applaud the parents who went in and talked to you and thank you very much for hearing them and for, for listening to them, because you just could have said, you know, thanks but no thanks. Um, but I think seeing the school committee and, and seeing you guys maybe come up with some of those options, I think would have made a few of us feel a little bit more comfortable that it's not always about the cut. It's about here's what's on the block, but what can we do as a community?
Sure.
To not put it on the block?
Sure. Um, I do wanna just acknowledge your contribution, I really appreciate it. But I do just wanna point out that we have a standing budget subcommittee that has worked on the budget for this year for ten months.
Yep.
Plus the, the dozens of meetings with the finance committee and the board of selectmen and all of the other work. So I, I do wanna reiterate that it was a thoughtful approach.
Yep.
Um, and it's also, this year's decision-making process was the result of the other five years I've been on the school committee's decision-making process, when we've cut all of the low-hanging fruit, so to speak. So everything that's left, that's a potential cost savings for us, is going to hurt.
Right.
And that's why I think probably since the budget summit in February, when we got our number, every public meeting I've been reiterating to the members of the community, if you don't like the direction that the schools are going, we don't choose our budget. Our budget is given to us and we're told that you have this much money to spend. So go to BOS, go to FinCom.
Fair enough.
Put your butts in the seats at town meeting and vote. Um, there are some things that we're spending money on this town, on in this town, that I'm staunchly opposed to, but just gets rubber stamped every year. So if the level of scrutiny that we're subjected to is turned around on the other parts of this community, then good things could happen. But the reality is, is because we are the schools and the schools have the most impact, we get thrown under the microscope.
Yep.
So let's talk about all of the other departments and the other millions of dollars in this town that we spend, so.
Fair enough.
I wanna thank you for coming out tonight.
Yep.
I'm really happy that it looks like you're going to be our women's basketball coach again next year. But, um, I also wanna thank the teenagers in the room, thank you for giving up one of your, your nights to come out and advocate.
I would love if you wouldn't mind talking about what Project Citizen is.
Yeah, you said your tenth grade students, it's a history project, can you say a little more about it, please?
Your teacher.
Yeah. Who, who's the awful teacher that's making you give up your Thursday night?
Our teacher, our history teacher, Ms. Docchow, we've had her for the past three years since eighth grade.
Wow.
And we're in the honors world history class and so we have a small class. So we got together and the, they had a parent meeting and then we got together, we came up with ideas, we wrote paragraphs on what we thought we could fix around the town. And we ended up choosing budgeting. And so a lot of things can go into budgeting, 'cause obviously, and then, so my big thing for it, it was, um, maintenance budget in the school, because our school is not even five years old and the auditorium ceilings are falling apart and there's paint coming off and there's just things that. The sinks don't work. Sensors don't work.
Yeah.
Um, they're just like these little things that could like work in the school and they just don't. And then, um, and just like a bunch of things that go into it.
You should meet with us.
Yeah.
Now we can talk to the facilities director and get some of those issues fixed.
Yeah, you shouldn't, that's our flagship, you shouldn't be talking about those things. Not like hiding them, it's just that shouldn't be a problem, so.
We'll look forward to meeting with you.
Yeah. Yeah, reach out, um, go see Mr. Crusoe, get your questions asked, come see Dr. Girardi. Like, you're surrounded by really good leaders here that will take the time to meet with you and answer your questions. And again, thank you for being involved.
And great teachers like Ms. Docroff, so that's really nice to hear.
We love her.
And is yours, is yours, you're both budgeting or is yours?
Um, our whole class is the same thing.
Yeah, our whole class is the same.
Cool.
So we'll be back.
Come to a budget subcommittee once your head will explode. Not in a good way. All right, um, let's talk co-teaching, please. Jen, you've got the floor. Did I see Jen in?
Carol? Jen, our director of student services, Carol.
Oh, okay. I s, I like it, you're conserving energy, it's been a long week. I'm excited for this, Carol, I've been doing this in Lexington for, going on ten years now.
Oh, you do it in Lexington?
Collaborative teach, we don't call it co-teaching. We call it collaborative. Because the idea of the model of co is that you have enough time for planning, that you can script out so much more. Whereas collaborative's more of a flexible model. So, I mean, it's, it's semantics, but we, we waxed about it in Lexington for probably three years and we just call it collaborative. But I love it, as a special educator, I get to teach neurotypical kids, you know, it's awesome.
So thank you so much for the opportunity to, to that information. I want to sort of process this by saying that this is really a 10,000-foot view of what we're looking at here. Let's go ahead and get this set up. So what you'll see once this line comes up. So what was really important for both Carol and I as we were looking at this work is to nestle it within the context of where it comes. So we have our strategic planning that we have, that we did a couple of years ago. We have major initiatives that are coming under that. And this is, so this is the visual that we created several years ago that outlines for us over the next five to seven years, or now I guess it's probably three to seven years, you know, what are the things we're gonna be working on within major public schools. So it was important for us to nestle this within the context of the, the plan so that we can see where it comes from. So we're focusing today on the pillar that's inclusive practices to support all students. And we've already started a few of these initiatives where we want some with teachers broadly within grade level or broadly within schools. We're getting some traction, we're getting some landmark in them and we will continue to move those initiatives on into phase two and phase three. We'll continue to move those initiatives on, however, if you can now follow what I said. So the next one is, is really looking at universal design, universal design for learning, aim for universal design.
Find the chair next to the laptop is a good method. It's up to you guys.
So what is universal design? Universal design comes from, I think it started in the eight, nineteen eighty, it was an architecture principle that instead of building a building with stairs, identifying someone needs to get in who is in a wheelchair or can't access the stairs, and then modifying the building to add a ramp, you just build the building either with stairs ending ramp or with preferably just a ramp because everyone can go through it, right? In terms of that, so that's the concept of universal design is I think the design process, you remove the barriers to access. Oftentimes in teaching and learning, we talk about these first two elements of the cartoon, which is if everyone is given the same thing, then you're gonna have people who can access just as basic as who they are and people who won't have access as basic as who they are, not having access to the box or their access to the curriculum. We'll talk about differentiated instruction, which is providing every student what they need in order to get access. So you're providing blocks for students to be able to access here at the level that they need. However, they still need to provide something different in order to be able to get access. What if in, in the design, we remove that barrier from the beginning? And that's the principle of universal design for learning. So as you're designing curriculum, as you're designing programs, how are you removing barriers for learning so all students can access as they are and develop their skill set in that capacity? Our first piece that we're working on here in this universal design for learning, we're going to put in a co-teaching model in an ele, in the elementary school. Justin was just talking about there are a variety of models of co-teaching, there's collaborative teaching, there is a teaching where there's one general education teacher or one special education teacher that works with multiple general education teachers and is in different rooms throughout the day. The model that we are looking at is one general education certified individual and one special education certified individual. We will be using the same placement model that we have been using in the past. Teachers will, are providing input in terms of groupings, looking at which students do well together, mainly more importantly, which students don't do well together, learning profiles, interests, abilities, teacher skill set, all of those different components to see who will fit well in those different components. The models that we have modeled ourselves after, look at, or fifty percent of students identified with special needs within that. But I want to make sure people understand this is not a homogeneous environment. This is intended as a heterogeneous environment. You will see fifty percent of students within a classroom space and then having the other fifty percent that creates a heterogeneous environment in that capacity. And because this is based off of the models that we've looked at. And then the commitment in terms of administration, when we've done the research about how to ensure models are successful, there are two real essential components to making sure the model is successful. One is ongoing professional development for teacher teams to make sure that they can be a successful collaborative partnership and then making sure that there is collaborative playing time so that they can do the work that Justin was alluding to of making sure they can finish each other's sentences and sort of designing the instruction together. And those are things that with the model we've identified that we have committed to. I think it's important to understand both what co-teaching is and what it is not. What it is, is very simply two professionals who work collaboratively in order to meet the needs of their students. The two professionals come from different areas of expertise, may have different areas of expertise that they can lend to the situation and they work together to use that expertise for the benefit of all of their students to make sure that every, how we can grow in ways that can develop critical skills. What it is not is a classroom teacher with a special educator as an assistant or a special education teacher with a classroom teacher as an assistant. That may be a model that the two choose to use where one teaches, one assists, but that is one of the models of co-teaching and it is not one person who's in charge and the other person just doing what that person says. It is not a model that promotes homogeneous grouping. All of the research is very clear that heterogeneity provides benefits for all students. If you raise the level of expectation for all students, all of the votes will rise. And so we are not looking to create a homogeneous grouping model. It is not a catch base for all of our students with the most difficult academic or behavioral challenges. We are not looking to put a group of students in a place where that is where they are and don't have inclusion with the rest of the community. And importantly, it's also not a place, it is not the only place where inclusion or differentiation will happen within the school. So we will have a co-teaching model, there will also be a first grade classroom that is not within the co-teaching model that will still be an inclusive classroom. There will still be students who have identified special needs in there. There will still be expectations for a modification and adaptation of curriculum and instructions so students can access. So inclusion, co-teaching is a way to get inclusion, but it is not the only way of having inclusion. And I think that's important for folks to understand. We looked at a variety of models and Carol can talk a little bit more about this in terms of who, who we talk to. Co-teaching is not something that's major generating.
It's been around since the eighties. And it's, you know, being in teaching that long, I've been able to see, that's almost everything in education and sort of goes around, comes around, just wait for the circle. I'm trying to like just do the pendulum, just try to swing somewhere in the middle. But, so Michelle and I were at a, an Aspen Valley district meeting that had the area's spend directors with the business managers. And of course, we're all talking budget, how you managing, how you managing? And we got to talking about co-teaching. And it was very interesting to hear the number of districts that are just piling in this year or they're in the second year, they're in the third year. And so I asked them, I says, what's your percentage in those classrooms? And they all said thirty percent, that's what I'm thirty percent. And then most recently, I sent out an email to our Aspen Valley directors saying, are you co-teaching, you know, let me know if you are, what grades and are you seeing benefits? And what are the benefits? Really quick, yes, I'm seeing benefits. So these are some of the districts that have replied. And they all said they're seeing increased end-up schools for all students. Not just special needs students, but for all students. That really piqued my interest. And they all said that they were seeing other positive benefits. Now, do you go and ask them another, give them another survey? It's something I can ask tomorrow when I have other directors meeting. Because I know we all try to share information in surveys and sometimes you just do this and you can't remember the survey. But I felt it was very interesting that there's so many districts within this area that are getting back into the whole co-teaching model. And as I looked back on my career, those have been some of the most fun and rewarding times to be working together with a teacher. And, you know, so it's just, it's, it's a very exciting model. And especially when you have two people that blend really well, that they communicate. And sometimes you're getting parent pairs that they really complement each other. Maybe you get a T one teacher that is very nurturing and structured and then you get somebody that has a very creative side. And, you know, you just blend those and all those kids get something really special. And I think, yeah, as you said, Justin, you have to experience it as an adult and as a student. And if it works really well, the kids can figure out who's the right or right teacher and who's the special teacher.
So going, just going back to this piece of it, I think it's important that, this is, this is the idea of what we're working towards. And we're not just working towards this image, but we're talking about this piece of mind, this one of a pilot to look into. Our next steps, you know, this is, this is a long-term implementation component so, you know, we can talk through that piece of it. We started looking at this and looking at parents and looking at groupings and looking at cost savings and doing this in a budgetary way and trying to figure out sort of how we do that. We are, are hesitantly firm-ish on launching this next year in two classrooms. We are looking at a first grade classroom and a fourth grade classrooms. Essentially, the process that we use is, we, we had the teacher, I'm sorry, the, the team chairs. Get together to look at groupings then of students to look at what would work, would this work in any sort of capacity? Have the special ed days on to look at those groupings from one through five. And then we started having some conversations with teachers who had either previously expressed interest in a co-teaching model or people thought might have the skill set or the capacity to do that or want to do that. As Carol alluded to, when you get a model that are, a partnership that works really well, it's very beautiful. And we've been talking with staff about it being very much like a marriage and you really sometimes have moments that are not beautiful. And so you do have to go into this in a way, understanding that, you know, most of the professional development for the first, you know, three months of launching is who am I? What's my teaching style? What's my personality style? When, when this annoys me, what do I do? You know, so it's a lot of that, just trying to figure out how do we act together as adults? So we really wanted to make sure that the people who we were, who were, who were gonna be going into these classrooms, one, understood that and were excited to do that work. So we're starting very slowly, but it was also a component of trying to figure this piece out. So we, we were always possible about naming down exactly how many classrooms we're looking at. And that's why it was so non-definitive of whether it is definitely two, but we're getting close to being able to say it is. We also liked the idea that we would be launching this in the first grade at Free Meadow that we'd be starting in and the first grade at Fowler. The teacher teams who we've been speaking with are very excited to move this forward. Some really great people who, who think they're gonna have some really collaborative relationships. And one of them said, you know, we open the doors between our classrooms now, this is what we do. So they're, they're really looking at that in that way. So we're very excited about this. And I think that it will be something that will, will really help to us to move forward in this inclusive practices that we're looking at.
What percentage of day, per, per day, per week are we looking at for the collaborative model? Because I know that, you know, you can do a curriculum specific, you can do a, you know?
There are gonna be two teachers in the classroom the whole day.
Perfect.
Yep. And we went with that specifically because the other models are much more challenging in terms of that relationship piece.
Yeah.
And we just felt like this was the right fit for me right now.
Predictability, consistency, okay.
How many, because they're doubled up, will they have double the amount of students in there?
So we're looking at no more than twenty-five students within the classroom spaces and most of them, as we were looking at, are under that.
I think it's about the same average size for that particular grade level.
How are you determining which kids with special needs and which kids without special needs will be into that classroom?
It's a placement process that we've done before. So with this, the special education team always at the beginning of the placement process identifies who are the students who we need to service, what are their service delivery groups look like? Who needs to do that and how to make the placement that will be successful? And then we land on top of that, the, the general education students and looking at different things, who's gonna work well together, who's not gonna work well together, taking in all of the feedback that we've gotten from teachers and parents. So it really is very much that same model. The benefit is though, instead of saying, you know, in three classrooms, we have to pull these people out in order to give them services during this time, the special education teachers are being the ones to be able to provide those services. So you're creating a better classroom culture. Additionally, you know, the data really does show in terms of our regional data that it's not just a benefit for students with special education, that really we're creating a differentiated environment where all students are able to access their strengths and develop their weaknesses.
Will there be more support from, I mean, fifty percent of the kids have special needs. You know, some of the kids in our schools have one-on-ones, will, will there be additional support for those kids? Out of that, not the ones they want on ones if they were in the co-teaching room, they would not. So there might be additional support in that class in addition to the two kids.
It makes sense, I can be, yes. Right now, what I can liken this to is our resource teachers or our special ed teachers don't have enough time to be in all those inclusion rooms. So there are paraprofessionals providing that, you know, in a, a more available, not the ideal, it's the idea that we have special ed teachers. Would be that we, we have enough special needs teachers to be able to do the cool-out services and to be in the inclusion. We can't, we're not doing that right now. Right now, it's a paraprofessional a good portion of the time. There are times when the, in, in, across the district, that the special ed, special education teacher is in PLA. Maybe not the full ninety minutes, but maybe three times forty-five, you know? And that's happening across the district. There is some, I'm not gonna call it, but maybe co-teaching of, even up in high school? Because I don't know how much we plan together. But there is some time that they have, the special ed teachers are going in to maybe a history class or a science class instead of a paraprofessional. So you need to look at it in that manner, is that the, the kind of support this group of students is getting is at a much higher level. They're not getting a paraprofessional, they're getting a master, master degree special ed teacher.
Yeah, but you have one, as a parent, this feels horrifying right now actually, that my child is gonna, could be in a class with twelve children that have special needs and one extra person. I feel like he's not gonna get any attention if my child doesn't need special ed because the reality is that both of those teachers are gonna probably be focusing on the group of twelve students that need help. You just said there's not enough people to do it now, but now you're just gonna put them all in one class and with one extra person.
That's presuming that all children with special needs are created equal. So, I mean, cause.
He knows, yeah.
I mean, this is what I do. So, I mean, the idea that, I mean, you could be on an IEP receiving specialized instruction for a reading disability. Or you could be on an IEP because you have profound autism or a behavioral disorder or an emotional disability. So, like, I, I hear where you're coming from on that, but like, having lived the model professionally in a different district for years, it's just not how it actually plays out.
Only because I was a principal of a school dis, of a building that actually improved our test scores and one of the major initiatives was co-teaching.
Yeah.
And as you said, it's like a marriage. When it works, the two teachers are actually teaching simultaneously. It's like, you know, when you work so well together with somebody, you're finishing each other's sentences. If somebody needs help, it's, it's not, it's just a couple of minutes here and the other person continues to teach on and then you, I jump in and then I continue finishing your sentences and I'm still delivering instruction. And so it really is like, it's like a symphony when it works well. The hard part is developing those teams, but two full-time professional teachers.
And you're gonna start this in September. So does the first group of kids, do people get a choice if their children are the task for the marriage?
So.
So we're gonna do placement and the same way if we've done placement before, which is what, what we talked about. There are a variety of instructions for co-teaching. There are a variety of instructions for co-teaching where, so it's not just 25 kids with one adult or two adults, you can tell 25 students. What you're doing is you're taking a situation where you're going to be able to be much more flexible, where you're going to be able to do things where you have station teaching. And I think the other piece for us to take note of is that this didn't just come out of the air, that Carol and Michelle went to a meeting and said, "Oh, this sounds fun, let's try it." You know, we went, we were looking at, we are one of five districts in the state that was awarded a grant on radar, which lives at resource reallocation. What the state essentially wants, which we're doing, is looking at this variety of data, from financial data, to achievement data, to special education data, demographic data, to look at our initiatives, to see are we placing our dollars in the right places? We're doing an initiative that's a bit different with that grant. However, our initial conversation and the exit of collaborative with many of those districts started with all of the districts saying, "Let's go in for a grant together." And we think co-teaching is a way for us to be reallocating our resources to get better results, because what Maynard found specifically is that over the last five years, we have increased our number of paraprofessionals while decreasing the number of special education students, and our achievement data has either maintained flat or has no consistency to it. So we are allocating a significant number of resources to a model that is not providing the, the benefit or the growth that we're seeing. So that, that I think is important to have in shape in terms of this. What we're doing right now is yielding us the results that we want, that our students should expect, or that you should expect, and so we're doing before. The marriages, as we've talked about, in terms of are we going to be testing it out, are we going to be very careful about the selection of these teachers, the professional development that they're going to be provided, and the work that they're going to be doing, so that there is no impact on students. It's very much the same way, and actually, it's better than a classroom teacher who gets a paraprofessional who may be assigned based on the student who's in a classroom space. They have no time to do a classroom, they have no time to complete that relationship, and, and the students suffer.
And, and as you said, we're doing this in a voluntary basis, so there are teachers who say, "We have our classroom doors open," because we have doors in between you, you know, "we think we're a marriage already, because we're already on the same grade level, or we're already friends." So we have some pretty talented teachers out there who are interested in, voluntarily interested in doing this. It's not like this has been an edict from on high. We have been talking with staff.
You know, I can't, I'm not having.
Come a couple.
Yeah, can, can we go to the other questions in the room?
Their arms are getting tired.
A couple of your points lead me to my, my question, and, you know, the model's definitely interesting to me, thanks to the presentation, but I think it really, you know, it poses the question, like, this co-teaching compared to traditional teaching for both special need kids and regular kids, seeing that you're combining both. What is the, you gave some good anecdotal information from other communities, other towns, that have successful experiences with this, but ultimately, what are the results? What are the outcomes? Not just for specialized kids, but for all.
That's, that's a good question.
So, like, I think all those points are nice, anecdotal, things are positive, and a good marriage, and we're having fun, but in the end, is the outcome better for both the traditional, is it better than a traditional program? Co-teaching for both specialized and regular kids?
There are two phases, or sort of two phases of research, remember? One was on, and this is nationally, not just looking globally in Massachusetts, nationally looking at co-teaching models, and starting back in the eighties. And through phase one and two, phase one was sort of the upstart, and then phase two was sort of looking at communication, the benefits that Carol mentioned that they're finding, in terms of cultural benefits within the classroom spaces. Both students and teachers identified that they felt supported to take risks in their environment, both students and teachers felt that they had an ability to get better at the things that they needed to get better at. There's a lot of things that we have been talking about for the last couple of years in the mindset field, that echo what they found in the research for the co-teaching from the eighties to, I think, for 2000s. What the research shows, again, the literature shows nationally, is that the next phase of research really needs to be about accountability data, in terms of those high-stakes tests, and what does that mean in that capacity? And so that is what the literature says the next phase is, where research is going to go to. That being said, I referenced the work with John Hattie that we've been talking about in terms of what, what are the things that have greatest impact on student achievement? We have been analyzing thousands of studies to figure that out. The number one thing that he found significantly above all the others, the teachers' view of students' ability to get better at things that they struggle at, that was the number one indication of what we have of the students in that classroom space. So if you take that data that Hattie has done with the data and the research from the co-teaching research that's been done, if we have students and teachers who have created this environment where everyone believes things can get better, and they want to better to do that, we've got that number one thing, that is a predictor of student success. And so that is something that we will, will be hugely important for our staff and our students. I hear your question, maybe this is leading into it, but this is about the wrong wire we're using for everyone, and there's a lot of answers to that, a lot of districts have tried that. Will we get there eventually? I don't know. But we're starting it here because it's important for us to start somewhere in doing this work so that students are getting the support they need in order to, in order to improve. Will we eventually get to the place where everyone's like, "This is amazing, and this is what we want to do"? Possibly. And I'm going to extract those out now, we're going to build a structure.
Go into the back.
I would agree. You cited a lot of data and that kind of analysis, but I'm just wondering, have you been in any of the classrooms to observe this model in person, and have the teachers?
We've all worked in the model. We've worked in, we do, we are arranging visits for those two teams of teachers. I think it was, I can't remember which district it was, was it Auburn? That we are trying to work out a date next week. I do want our two teams to be able to go up and see active teams, to see what it looks like, and to sit down for about 30 minutes and ask them questions. How does this kind of work? Who does this? I divide all the duties.
So would that be their only exposure to it, prior to saying, "This is what we're going to do next year"? Because it seems like a very short.
They're pretty excited about it. They're very excited. We've asked the long term.
I know. I'm just saying, you know, I'm on the air for something and not know what you're getting yourself into.
I'd say no. You know.
We've definitely. I think there's a question for some of our teachers who are signing up for this one, who has worked in another district who has had this model, actually, one of the two have done that, and the other two, you know, very much answered some questions in terms of what it is and what it's, what it's not. So, you know, we can vary upfront about the challenges that this type of interaction will provide, and those students, not all the students, some of these old relationships, and that that's the work that's going to have to be done. And that's why we're being very selective about making sure that we feel confident that these two individuals who are going to be working together understand that, and understand the work that they're going to have to do in order to figure this out. Because we can send them to see all of the co-teaching models in Massachusetts, and the reality is that their model is not going to look like any of them, because it has to be the relationship between the two individuals. And we are also not just sort of saying, "Here, go see a classroom space, and then guess another, or somewhere, and talk about what we want to do in the classroom." We're using a structured information model that other districts have used, we're using professional development providers that other districts have used in order to push this toward.
Because my concern is that you're, you're implementing a new model on top of the new administration model that was just implemented this year, and it just seems like a lot of change, and there's already, you know, not enough support to go to the teachers the way things are this year, let alone to change things up so drastically for, you know, us new district teachers next year. I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, there's careful thought and, you know, planning that goes into it.
Thank you. Sounds like there is. Yeah.
I'm just thinking about, from a hypothetical standpoint, and certainly no one likes to think of worst-case scenario, but when you're talking about a marriage, what happens when lots of big?
If they're not over, I want a divorce.
What happens because you're halfway in it?
Yeah.
And you've got these kids now who are sort of not sure if these two teachers, whoever fills in, is going to mesh.
Well, I think that that's partly from all the young volunteers. The two pairs have already worked together well, they, you know, and they feel that they already have, not necessarily similarities, but they have good collaboration and good communication together always. And I think that's a good, good start.
So you're going to have, you're going to have alternate in the event?
I, I anticipate it.
So what we talked about with other, the piece of this, like you said, it's really about the cultural spaces, identifying that their relationship is one of the most, if not the most important factor of student success in this, and even there are clear meetings about that, and there are clear on that. Both of us have been in co-teaching environments, both by and for co-teaching, both special education and the general education teachers, general education teachers before, to be honest, where it's, you know, right now, it's not as a sign of our success is different, but that has to be okay, so that you can really back to it. And what we said there, because they asked the same question, well, what happens if it's like, we can't work it out because of version, but you know, that's when we come in, bring it outside of therapist, you know, it's, it's having that support to be able to have that dialogue, and do that, have those internal conversations. You know, worst-case scenario, if we get to October and it's not working, then we've got to figure something out. We need to, you know, the two of us go to the patent, I'm not saying we'll do that, but you know.
Well, and I mean, I mean, Jen, honestly, so I would say, Jen, honestly, like, and I respect the question, I think it's a good one to address tonight, not in September. At some point, like, you do constantly have changing classrooms, changing needs, performance issues, changing kids. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to predict the future, but I liked how you mentioned that the teachers are volunteers, you know, two of them have done it before, they'll have some site visits, they'll have a lot of professional development around it, and again, they're volunteering, no one's being obviously forced, and it sounds like a slow rollout, which is perfect. And I think, I've been doing a lot of work with the police department lately, and one thing we know is change is very hard. And I respect that, but we brought you in because change is, change is needed. So hopefully, we've heard enough tonight to move forward. I appreciate the update, this isn't something we need to vote on, but thank you for all the work you both pulled in. It's great to hear that there's other ways of doing things, because we constantly get asked of, "What are the other ways of doing things?" from up here.
Thank you. All right. Let's talk about the administrative model survey results.
Nope, I'm sorry.
Oh, food service. The binders.
So, I'll start off, and Michelle will help me with this, but the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires us to write an RFP for a food service contract at a minimum once every three years, and technically, it's a one-year contract, and it can be rolled over two years. If, you know, another one year and another one year. So three years ago, we actually had a contract, we did an RFP with Whitsins', and it was a partially privatized RFP. Actually, we said the RFP as either full privatizing or partially privatizing. At the time, the school committee chose to do a partial privatized model with Whitsins'. Whitsins came in, and we were pleased with their service generally, the food is really good, and that's important to me. But, but, you know, the, the quality of their employees have been overall pretty good. We've had some issues that we've taken care of along the way, but we did extend their contract another year, and then another year. But now, after three years, the Department of Ed requires us to write another new RFP. So Michelle went through the effort to write an RFP, and you can see on their tables, we actually had two respondents, one was Whitsins' and one was Fresh Pick. Similar to the RFP three years ago, she had written it so that one option would be for full privatization, the other one would be for partial privatization. And when I say partial privatization or hybrid model, what happened was through attrition, I think, four out of 12 employees retired or resigned over the course of the time, and they became, then Whitsins had to hire their own employees. So we still have nine employees, am I correct, Michelle?
Not, well, eight employees in one cell, that is, district.
In the district currently, that are town employees, so to speak, or school employees. So Michelle, you know, has performed the RFP review process, which requires her to use a specific evaluation criteria to identify the advantageous aspects of each proposal. You have that in your packet tonight. She created that attached chart summarizing her assessment of the bid proposals. Her recommendation was to choose Fresh Picks, option B, which would require full privatize, full, full privatization, which would mean laying off nine food service workers. However, she did note that usually these companies will hire them back as their own employees, and that the salaries are actually pretty comparable. So that is the recommendation that Michelle made, but in addition, as another layer, she had me review the document, so that I would make my own recommendation, so that it's not just one person relying on, we're not just giving you one person's opinion. I have reviewed this document, and I agree with her assessment, so I am recommending that the school committee approve the contract with Fresh Picks, B option. The deadline for the RFP is, the RFP says there'll be an award by May 22nd, so we do need a decision tonight, and you, you know, it's one company or the other, and option A or option B. That's your discussion points for tonight, but we are asking for an approval, because with food service, we need to have a decision now, so that we can, they can, the company can come in, bring their employees, do their trainings, because they have summer trainings, and we can be ready for the opening of school in late August.
So I'll make a motion to just get the discussion started, because once in a while, we should do things officially.
I'm, I've done.
So I moved to approve the, move to Fresh Picks as our food service provider, and I'm making a motion just to get the discussion going.
Motion's been made, do I hear a second? All right, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
Did you pick an option?
Oh, I said Fresh Picks.
Right, but is there option A or B?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the one that Michelle and I recommended was option?
A was the whole privatization, right?
No, B.
B.
That's the one, so option B.
Okay, so to clarify that.
Dawn, why don't you withdraw that, and then we'll, we'll make a clean motion?
Yeah, I withdraw my motion. Motions get worse at seasons later.
Do it again, you need to do it again.
No, I'm off the table, anyone can do it.
No, we want you to do it again.
So I moved to authorize the director of school finance to move to Fresh Picks, option B, full privatization.
Motion's been made, now here's a second. Thank you, Mary. Now, discussion, or questions of clarification?
So I, I just had a question, clarification. So with the option A and option B in, on the first page, in parentheses, the red parentheses, that's how much we're in the hole each year, that's how much we have to?
No, 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 that's, so, yes, but, so when I put out the RFP, you're actually required by the Department of Ed to put it out at a break-even or surplus. The problem is, is that we're a fairly small district, and it's very hard to get the participation rate up to a point where we're at break-even or at a surplus. That's extremely common across all food service programs, whether it's an in-house program or a contracted program. So the negatives is their proposals to us, so the, the one, the option that we're talking about, option B, that's, it's $1,500.
Versus $20,000 for a team.
Versus $20,000 for a team, which would be Whitsins'. And then, like, you see the other ones, the hybrid models are, the hybrid models tend to be more expensive, because they have to provide, we, we provide a good benefit package, and that all has to come into consideration with our employees, and so they have to take our numbers, which is why it's so much harder to get to a break-even point when you're at the hybrid model.
So, and I would just add that when we had our own food service director, we were losing roughly 30 to 50 or 60,000 dollars a year. So losing $1,500 a year through this is the least, yeah, and the other ones aren't even close, so it.
So, and I, I just want to give you, you know, a background, I know you have my summary here, but I, I would love to just talk on, like, the things that I saw. You each have a copy of each of their proposals in front of you. They're both beautiful proposals, they have a ton of information, and what I did personally is I went through each book and took out the different points that we would have to take into consideration with even, you know, just going with a whole new food service program. We also did talk, and Bot didn't mention this, but we also talked about, is it even reasonable for us to maybe look at going back in-house, you know? Would that be a benefit?
Yes, did everything.
We, we did, we looked at, another thing that we looked at was also partnering with another district. We had talked with Hudson about going out to bid together to see if we could get some better, get some larger companies interested in us, because again, we're a small district, so it's hard to get outsiders to want to even come in and bid on us. And we also talked about with Assabit, about partnering with them, they have an in-house food service program. So we, we really did look at every type of resolution to our food service program. So as part of our RFP, there are these comparative evaluation criteria that you, I have to go through, and that's what's like required with the RFP, that's what you're. through, and that's what's, like, required with the RFP, that's what you're seeing in front of you is the summary of going through that, plus going through their non-price proposal bids. They actually are very similar, both Witsen's and Fresh Picks, when it came to the comparative evaluation criteria. They scored highly advantageous at the same places, advantageous and not advantageous at certain places. There were, so then I had to take it to another level, so what I did is, I called a lot of their references, I summarized four references from each of them on this paper, and, and I can personal, personally give a reference for Witsen's, I worked with Witsen's this, you know, the two years that I've been here, our food service director for Witsen's is amazing, he is, I've worked with a bunch of food service directors, and Chris is really, really invested, and, so, I took into consideration all of those different things. What I did find was the different areas on the financials, in the financial reporting, and being accountable for, you know, their part of it, or stepping up to the plate to, you know, kind of help us reduce our loss. This year, we're projecting a loss in food service about thirty thousand, last year, we lost about twenty-seven thousand, I believe it was, so, you know, we really need to step up to the plate. The thing that I found when I called every single district for Fresh Picks was, and, I actually have a letter from them, too, was every single district talked about their investment in the community, their ability to bring up the participation rate, which is what's hurting us a lot, the availability of menus and nutritional ga- nutritional information on all the menu, it was, it's very impressive, it's really impressive. And not to say that Witsen's doesn't have that either, it's, it's just their, the districts that have Witsen's just are not very happy at this moment, and it has nothing to do with the people who are actually working in our building, which is what makes it a little bit like, you know, whatever, but, very impressed with what everyone had to say about Fresh Picks, I, I asked about, are you, are you okay with their, their financial reporting? Do you feel that you can reconcile to them, which is one of my issues with Witsen's, to in a, a bunch of districts? Do you feel they're invested in your community? Do you feel their food quality is great? Did they raise your participation rates? Were they ever able to bring districts, and one of the evaluation criterias is, are you able to bring a district that is running in the hole to a break even point? And although Fresh Picks, I had to put down that they were not advantageous on that, it was only because the way I wrote the criteria was within the last three years. Fresh Picks, a lot of their, a lot, like, almost sixty percent of their clients are, have been with them for so long, that that, bringing them to the break even point happened ten years ago. They still have the, from nineteen ninety-four, the same district. They have a lot of longevity with them. One of the hesitations was that we would have been the first district in Massachusetts to have Fresh Picks, and, but since they put out their bid, actually, Long Meadow, who had Witsen's, now has signed a contract with Fresh Picks as well, so we will not be the first one in Massachusetts to have it, because I tend to keep hav- having that happen to me when I do things, so I was a little bit hesitant, but they are not the first one, and we will not be the first one in Massachusetts, they have a proven great track record in New Hampshire, Vermont, Maine, and, like I said, they've had this, their first district that picked them, they have been with them for twenty-five years now, or whatever, and they do have a lot of that longevity, and, and it's within this book that you can see it, but when it comes down to it, a fifteen hundred dollar loss a year versus a fifty thousand, thirty thousand, you know, eighteen thousand, twenty thousand, and, and not to say that it comes down to the numbers, but it's, it's financially prudent for us to move in that direction.
Well, you also have to mention savings on the town side.
And it's savings on the town side as well, not only this fifteen hundred dollars, but also because it's full privatization, the health insurance, the OPEB liability of the retirement, those kind of things falls on Fresh Picks, and it does not fall on our town, so it saves the town money on that end as well. So, all around, it makes the pot of, the pot, just a little bit less taken up, I guess you could say, you know.
Can, can that savings be earmarked for Witsen's?
I would love that.
So, just a couple of questions, where's their home base?
Uh, New Hampshire.
Okay, all right.
But, I'm actually, now, I want to say, when I say the first district in Massachusetts, that's for school districts, they're actually, Fresh Picks is part of Cafe Services, that handle nursing homes, hospitals, other institutions, like, even corporations, they do their cafes there, within Massachusetts, they actually have a huge base in Massachusetts, we would be, well, we're not anymore, but the second school district, but outside, they're very familiar with Massachusetts, how everything works here, it's not that they've only done business in New Hampshire, it's just their school districts have only been in New Hampshire, Vermont, and so forth, so.
And did they tell you how they're, I mean, I know increasing, you know, the number of kids that participate in that is one piece of balancing it out, but how else do they, you know, make it, because we've always been in the hole significantly, like you say, so how are they gonna do that?
Um, I think, I think they're-
Hopefully not by raising the lunch-
No, it's, uh, this, these proposals actually keep our lunch rate, both, both companies kept our price of lunch the exact same. It had nothing to do with raising the cost of lunch, it, it really was their ability to go in and raise the participation rate. The other thing that they do is they do a lot with, in, in, a lot with local farms, a lot with the commodities, they're very efficient on the commodities that the state gives us, which is basically like free food that they give us to use, they're really good about that, they're efficient in that. The other thing that they're efficient in is their safety, which, because one of my questions, actually, I'll tell you, in these price proposals, I looked at the difference between Witsen's workman's comp and Fresh Picks' workman's comp number, what they pay, and I was, I was wondering why it was so different, so I actually called Fresh Picks and said, you know, are you sure you have, like, Massachusetts numbers before, you know, and I really did, because it was a significant difference, and I wanted, and, and that's when I got the answer to, oh, no, we're in Massachusetts, we're just not in school districts in Massachusetts, we're very familiar. What it is, is that they're, they, they have a really great safety plan, in that they have reduced the number of injuries within their company so much that their rate for workman's comp is extremely low, so they're able to put out these bids where, you know, and it's, it's a, it's a difference of twenty thousand dollars, to be honest with you, which is what raised all these things in my head, when I was, I'm like, did they mess up on the numbers, like, you know, whatever, but we had a very fluid conversation about the reason why, and, and that's the reason why is that they're, you know, they're hugely focused on safety with their employees, safety with the students, safety within their, the companies that they serve, which ended up getting them better rates, so they're able, that, that's really where the difference is, to be honest with you. The other thing is that their investment into the school, they're, they're looking at some digital signage, now, that's all worked into this, it's not additional costs to us, but they're very invested in the schools, where they want to move you past the technology, they have an app that you can go on and see the menu and the nutrition guy, guidelines with all the nutrition information for every single menu item, you'll have that access right in your hands. Some other things that they do is, they're really big on green, being green, and then they're also, which is initiative of everybody these days, but really important to me nerd, but they're very big on the, now I'm blanking, what is it called?
Talk around it, circumlocate it.
Growing the vegetables.
Garden?
Oh, hydroponics.
Hydroponic gardens, there you go.
In the schools.
Like, what the heck is it? Yeah, very big on gardens, but I, and, you know, and you guys, anyone is welcome to look through these proposals at any point if you want to.
Does anyone want them?
If you want to take a look, you can, but they, and almost every single district that they're in, they have a hydroponic garden, that, which Chris Piercy also does have a window one here, but they're really big on it, they actually donate them to at least one science classroom, and then they work with, with the teacher within the science classroom, and the children growing, you know, the vegetables, and then bringing, right, and then bringing the vegetables down to the cafeteria, where the kids even participate in creating meals for their other students, so, and it's one of their ways where they feel that that's where they get more participation, was because, like you always, like I always say to my kid, is like, you want to help me make dinner, then maybe they'll eat dinner, you know, because they had a part in it, and that is one of their methods on increasing the participation. They do things where they have, like, cook-offs, you know, where they'll have, like, students volunteer to make, who makes the best pizzas, and all of those things, yeah, cupcake wars, you know, those kind, well, we can't serve cupcakes unless they're-
That's right, you don't serve-
Meet the nutritional guidelines, but-
Carrot cupcake war.
Carrot, yeah.
All right, so, so, Michelle, Michelle, pause for error.
So, you know, love you, and this is exactly why we have you, you get into this stuff.
I also have a degree in culinary arts, so.
Oh, you do?
Wow.
So, you just ran, Michelle, you just ran through my stop sign.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah, okay.
We have some other questions, so let's get on to those.
One, one other question, how long of a commitment do we, how long is the contract?
It's the one year, it's one year, with the option of two-year renewals after, I mean, one year renewable, two years after.
And do they, so if we went after that one year, do they then go like, hey, now we're in, we're jacking up our price, I, I don't know, I mean, not that they would do that, but-
No, it's all part of their, they propose it on a three-year, and they actually base their increases on the CPI, the same, the same way everything, like the bus bid does as well, and, so when they put forth their proposal, it's for the three years, we just get to decide after year one, after year two, if we want to continue with them for the next year.
And I believe by law, they don't raise the price, they would come to a school committee meeting and ask you, as a school committee-
For the lunch prices, is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They, they can't raise it on their own, they, you make that decision, because I think we-
I thought you meant their, their fee.
I think that came up once, like, five years ago, do you remember that, Justin?
Vaguely.
I think it did come up once, five years ago, so.
Oh, oh, I just, I just wanted to ask, I know when we made the move to Witsen's, and we, we moved to privatize, one of the, the things we discussed is we said we were going to keep our employees and wait for them to retire.
Yep, that's the hybrid model.
And then we moved towards, towards privatizing, so I'm just, I'm, I'm, I appreciate that you said, you know, the pay is comparable, but I wonder with benefits for those nine employees?
No, there are benefits offered from each-
I, I know, but I just wonder how they come, I, I'm just curious, like, to what degree are our employees aware of, I, I'm assuming they're aware that we've been out to bid, and that this is a possibility, but what's the communication been like around that with the nine?
It's just been to Witsen's that we're, they've had to go through the RFP, the food service major knows, shared with them the information, but-
But they don't necessarily know?
I don't know, I wouldn't know if it trickled down to-
It's just a different communications pipeline.
What else we got?
Other questions? All right, motion's been made and seconded, call for a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Was that a yes or?
It was a yes.
That was a yes, okay.
That was the last one, yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thanks, Michelle, thanks for doing all the work.
Excellent. Michelle, thanks for the work.
A lot of work.
And the information.
Oh, yeah. All right, now let's talk about the administrative model survey.
So, at the teacher and administrator collaborative roundtable meetings, we, it was suggested that we create a, a survey on the new administrative model. We did the survey, Jennifer did the survey, she shared the summary of the findings with the staff, and discussed it directly with the MEA president. Jennifer also summarized some of the narratives for me, so I want to read those to you. While there were staff, multiple staff members that believed the model should be continued, there were similar numbers of comments indicating that the model held promise, but that changes need to be made. If the model were to continue, the feedback indicated the following issue should be addressed. More than one administrator is needed in each building to provide adequate supervision and staff support for both academic and cultural needs. The allocation of tasks to each position should be reviewed to address the overwhelming amount of responsibility on the principal of leadership and operations. Clarity around the roles and responsibilities needs to be provided for both staff and the administrators in each role. Parents and student communication needs, parent and student communication needs to be, it needs increase for each role. Now, due to the promise of this new model, we, and the survey results, again, were mixed, but, you know, some of them more narratives were, you really didn't give this model a chance, because you've been cutting administration at the building level. And so, you know, we do believe there's promise in this new model, we have had teachers qualitatively report that the dialogue in the evaluation system is much better, that the principals have more time, but not enough time, because right now, we have one principal of ma- of curriculum instruction assessment across both Fowler and, and the Green Meadow, so it's not enough time. And so, you know, I think Jennifer and I, in addition to this staff report, really do believe that this model has promise and has shown some benefits, but it's the staffing level that's the biggest issue. We talked, I've talked before about the idea of expanding this to the high school, because at least at the high school, we do have two administrators in the building, even though one's point five, assistant principal, point five athletic director, I still feel that we, we should really change the model there, so that we have one person focusing on curriculum, one on, on leadership and operations. And I've already been in process, we've talked about that before. But the Fowler and Green Meadow problem still has to be addressed. Having half an administrator in two different buildings isn't working, and this year, I feel there's even more of an urgency to address this. I think the reason why is, we're seeing a lot more of investigations that are necessary for bullying, for harassment, citizens' concerns. This week alone, the principal of leadership and operations in Fowler had three bullying investigations, the director of student services had two harassment investigations, and the assistant superintendent has one citizens' concern investigation. And what happens is, you know, we had an incident where we had a couple of pretty large boys getting involved in a fight here at the building, and when you're trying to do an investigation, and then you have a fight, you have to prioritize, you have to run and take care of the fight, but some of the classroom stuff, you know, the person's not able to be out there and say hi to the parents and the kids as they come in, they're not able to do a lot of things because of all the investigations that are happening. Now, the good news on the investigations is, the majority of bullying investigations, I can tell you, have come back that they're not bullying, but that, what that tells us is, we need to do more professional development for students, parents, teachers, staff, everybody, what is bullying? But the bad news is, there's a reason why there's a law there. Occasionally, we have found bullying, there have been occasions where we find it, and for every one that we find, all the more the necessity that we have to investigate any question of bullying or harassment, so we can't not do that, that has to be a priority, but we need the additional staffing between the Fowler and Green Meadow. So, I just feel an urgency with that data, with our qualitative data that Jennifer and I have shared with you, that at least some parts of it are working well. I think it's important that we do something quickly, because we've heard a lot of parent concerns, that, you know, the discipline at Fowler has been an issue. And I really feel we, you know, we haven't used, been able to use Charles on a part-time basis to help out, but that's not, we need a full-time additional staff administrator in this building, and not having the split. I would recommend that we do something immediately, because I'm just very nervous, especially after the week we've had, that we need to get a full-time administrator here at Fowler in addition to the one that we have.
So, it's really two things you're talking about, so there's basically the model, the feedback, how can we improve moving forward, and that's just divisions of duties and titles and contract compliance.
Right.
I've never personally been too hung up on what we call everyone, but I know that it has to be certain things to be able to do certain things.
Right.
And a survey after one year that says, we've got work to do- And a survey after one year that says, we've got work to do, is really helpful. Like, I'm actually glad that you guys surveyed the staff and that's part of this whole collaboration we always talk about wanting to have. And it's not surprising that we've got areas to work on, 'cause it's a new model, in a building that lost some administrative support. So that's one issue, right, the model itself. And, and what I'm seeing is what I would expect to see after a year. But I think number two is really, and I don't mean to focus on Fowler, but just as a school committee member and a community member, it's the building I hear the most about. And I think it's the building that's suffering the most with lack of another person in the building and another administrator. It's not like we need another science teacher, it's we need another person. Hold on. Now I ramble, but you're almost there. Okay, well, that exists. That exists, I told you, we took a couple of weeks off. But anyway, Bob, just to say, I understand what you're talking about, 'cause I think we've all heard it in different ways, that we need another administrator in this building. You know, that is separate from how we split up the duties. And I, and I trust you and Jen to split up the duties and things like that, but adding an administrator would be a budgetary concern, which is why I believe you're talking to the school committee.
Correct, so, you know, another challenge in Meadert has been getting substitutes. And, you know, kudos to all the staff members who will do coverage and we, we were able to make it work. But this year, the substitute line item has not been used up. So I feel for the rest of the year, we have the money to hire another administrator to help us get through this challenging year. I really feel that we should continue it on into the following years, because I just, and I, I feel that we need to look at that. But for the rest of this year, I'm very concerned and I would like to hire another administrator for this building. And I really feel that moving on into the future, even though I know when we cut, you know, we've increased class size and we've cut an elementary teacher, we've cut some coaches, we would love to bring coaches back. I think Jennifer and I, our, we, at the last meeting, we said our first preference would be bring back a math coach. If we have the extra money, you know, we had to figure out what negotiations were to be, we've got that down now, so. I just feel like the administration is a priority now in this building and it has to be addressed, as much as we would love to see the academic staffing be increased.
So I, I could send you a note, 'cause I'm a little confused on what the whole scenario is gonna look like. So, at the high school, we talked about doing some changes.
Well, we still have a principal and a point five principal, point five administrator. And as Dawn said, what we call them and how we divide up the duties, there's an advantage to having somebody doing all of the evaluations. And so I think that's important to do. That's more, as Dawn said, a management issue, how do we divide up their responsibilities and what do we call them?
Right, so at Fowler.
So that's, they're, they've always been lucky enough to be kind of on their own and they, they, they work at it pretty hard and they do a good job.
So, at the Fowler would be, I guess I'm trying to figure out that point five position that we now have Donna Dankina, point five at Green Meadow, point five at the Fowler, would she continue with that role or somebody, if she retired, somebody else? And then in addition, we've got Mary Beth down at Green Meadow full-time, and then we have two administrators. So at the Fowler, it'd be two and a half, sort of?
No, so, I, I'd like asked, yeah, so I think.
I'm confused, I, yeah.
That what, right now, we have Donna splitting two buildings as the, as the evaluator.
It's one point five at Green, one point five at Fowler.
And one point five. I think what would have to happen is Donna would be at the CIA just at Green Meadow. We hire an administrator for the rest of the year, try them out, and then figure out who becomes the CIA and who becomes the LMO here, but then you have two bodies. Point is, we've had to hire a retired administrator, because when Donna's in one building and somebody else, an administrator's out sick, we don't have anybody in here. And again, thanks to the teachers for stepping up and doing everything they can, but we can't expect them to live without this administrative support. And so I really feel strongly that if we put somebody in place now, we figure out next year which one would do which task, 'cause that's just a tap. But right now, we need management and operations. We don't need to worry about the evaluations, thank goodness Donna has been working overtime to get it all done. But I think that we need that management and operations and we need to get some.
We need to flip the culture.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was gonna say, in looking at the, the survey.
Yeah.
That's at least, I, I just, I worry about hiring somebody now for the rest of the year, unless you have somebody in mind who's an internal hire, because I just worry, what is, who's looking for a job right now for the rest of the school year when it's, I, I just wanna get a good, like, somebody who's gonna come in and do something major to address the culture piece, 'cause that stands out to me and it's not necessarily mentioned on the list of the four things.
Yeah.
But I see that coming.
No, no, and, and Jennifer had said that, culture's very important. You know, I think that, as you and I have talked about, we need a dynamic leader here, who can manage the building and work with the staff and create that cultural, cultural change that needs to happen. I, I know we've had this debate before, a lot of the school committee members, that you can't always get somebody in the middle of the year. I personally feel that there are opportunities. I know that when I interviewed for this current position here, there were a lot of qualified candidates, some of them are even local residents. And so I really feel strongly that of the pool of candidates, if, if you give me the approval to, I would go out and I would interview people that have already applied, that I feel are quality people, not just, I mean, we can post and see if there's any internal candidates, of course, we always do that anyway. We post for internal first, that's part of our practice or policy. I think it's part of contractual obligations. So we would obviously look for internal candidates too. But I do think that there are quality candidates out there that could be, can be found.
Well, if you don't find someone.
No, I mean.
Then that would be a different discussion, but.
If we don't, then I'll be back here two weeks ago from now and say, you know, I don't think we found anybody and hopefully we're still muddling through.
So, the way that, the way that I hear this posed and the way the, the agenda item is written, you're, this is an update, and, but it's also a plea. So at this point, not knowing that anything that was discussed tonight is actually going to enter the realm of possibility, like, are we going to find the appropriate candidate? Are we going to be able to get them in here? I don't see us needing to take any action on this other than say, yeah, Bob, like, I, I hear the need, go forth and find it. So, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I think there was a concern from last year that's carried over in many different comments in many different ways about the management, particularly Fowler, and having brought the eighth grade, grade back down to the school.
It's been a challenge.
And that was new this year. And in our community forums that, that we had, where we were getting parent input for the district, that was loud and clear. I just think this, I, I, I wanna bring back a math coach. But this is a more, this is a very salient issue that I think that we're in immediate need to try to figure out. And if there's a way that we can do that, and then if we can look at how we carry that person through and they're willing to, you can, you feel like you've got someone that you can try to, I feel, I think it's worth trying.
Yeah. Come to, come back to us like, you know, next meeting or reach out to us and let us know.
I'll update you as far as the process and if I can find a good candidate, I'll update the school committee as to what I'm doing as far as negotiations.
Cool.
Awesome, good, thank you.
It sounds like this is gonna be a Band-Aid to get us through until June twenty-first. So, with the cultural, lack of discipline problems, you know, my son's in seventh grade and he's always done the day. It's gonna, it's gonna keep happening to the people, so what's gonna happen, we'll have our Band-Aid, but then what's gonna happen next?
Well, I think, we need a Band-Aid now. Yeah, that's what we're talking about, let's do something quick. But I also think if we can find somebody dynamic, if we can get somebody in place and they start to take hold, if, if the staff says, wow, this is, you know, they feel, this feels good, I think it's good to carry that on into the future. I think it's a necessity, because, you know, at the last meeting, I know it's a lot easier to cut administrators than it is classroom supports, I get that. But the reality is, there's only so many administrators and you cut back, we found out that, you know, if you cut, I bite my nails, if I bite too far, it hurts. We're at the point where it hurts. And so.
But is it a budget allowed for us to pass the ministry? Like, so what you're saying is that person, there would still be two people?
That's my desire.
The budget should as a result, because we've settled the contract now and we have a better sense of.
And we were hoping that we would be able to bring back a, a teach, a coach, quite frankly, that was our preference. But I feel strongly right now that if the contract just settled tonight and it looks like there could be money to have another administrator, I think my, my fingernails hurt.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I feel like, to be honest, and I, I can't speak for the teachers, 'cause I'm not allowed to really contact them a lot. But like, I feel like I've heard unanimously that we need another person in this building. And it's not, you know, and I have to be very clear, and I know there's always the administration, the teachers, and there's, you know, give and take there, but like, we really do need someone else. So we tried it, it was a budget crunch. You know, and we have faith in whom we have here to make those decisions. I don't, I haven't met really anyone who disagrees. We're never gonna all be happy with every decision you see made or that he makes or she makes, 'cause that's what they're allowed to do by law. But I think we need another person in this building, so.
I totally agree, I just, you know, how.
And you know what, we have to, well, I think we're always looking and the, not having the teacher contract settled for eighteen months, I mean, it's fine. But there was a huge financial unknown, right? So now we know a little bit more, and I think that that's the plan, so.
That's as a year, that's reassuring.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I would consider it funded for next year.
And to be perfectly honest. Excuse me, what?
So just like twenty-five, that's sort of the two here and then so one and a half at Green Meadow?
No, we would shift it so that it'd be two full people in every building, just like it was seven years ago when I started.
Except that their duties might be different, because the model is working, it's just without full staff.
Yes, both schools would benefit.
So both schools would benefit, absolutely.
Before, before we ran on. Before we wrap up Ann's line of questioning, and this is delving a little bit into Agenda Item ten, members' comments and questions. I did have the opportunity to talk to Chairman De Silva tonight at the MEF event. And he expressed some cautious optimism following town meeting, that there might be a little bit of extra help potentially coming our way. I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for him, I don't wanna pretend like it's going to happen, because we all know the realities of the budget process. But I, the conversation started with me thanking Chairman De Silva and the, the select board as a whole for kicking those health insurance savings back to us two BOS meetings ago. I hadn't had a chance to see him publicly and my pure intent was to be like, Chris, you did us a solid, thank you so much. And he said, you know what, like, I'm cautiously optimistic, there's some things that are happening, looking at stuff, like, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can come back to you and make that situation even better. So, knowing the way, the budget, the way that we do, the fact that we have settled the teacher's contract and that there's going to be some, some changing numbers there, like, but here's, here's the, the thing about budget, it's constantly evolving. The state periodically throws extra money at us that we're not expecting, you know, so we think we know the number, but we never really know the number. But we, when it comes to this, and there has been some conversation behind the scenes, like, we are as optimistic about being able to pay for this as anything that I've seen in a while.
Well, and that good news about circuit breaker, that's our biggest driver. So just hearing that Senator Aldrich and the senators pass that could really help us out. That wasn't something we were counting on.
And I do see your hand in the back.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to say that I know you mentioned, you know, you didn't, you don't talk to the teachers, I don't know how much.
Well, I mean, I know lots of teachers, but I can't walk up and say, hey, I have some questions for you.
No, I know.
Like, that's just not what our role is.
Right.
You know, Bob is very clear, like, leave my teachers alone.
Well, I just wanted to, 'cause I feel like I'm in a unique position, I used to work here, I'm a parent, I'm a, you know, I'm a little bit of everything. I work in a different district, I see different ways that people do things and the committees and everything. But when I'm hearing so much this year and it breaks my heart, is the kids. That, you know, it's my daughter's friends, it's the older kids that are in eighth grade now that are just like, what happened? Like, they're, and the teachers feeling like there's just no law here. It's like, no one can do anything, Sharon's overwhelmed, you know, Donna's doing what she has to do and she's doing a good job at it, at it. But, you know, everyone's filling in for everyone else and the kids are just all bewildered, sad, crying, you know, they're losing teachers, they're.
And that was last year's budget reality, you've, you've certainly lived through that.
No, I know.
And I think that this is our, you know, we all, we do hear often, and I understand where the feeling comes from, that we never bring something back. We are bringing, I'm not excited, I, I wish we weren't in this dire situation, but like, we are gonna bring this back. You know, we're bringing up, we're bringing back the Green Meadow specials, that was just tied up in the teacher contract stuff, like, no one's fault, but it was just, you have to do things.
Let's take that conversation offline, Ann, but there's, there's some good stuff happening.
We're very excited, the contract is great for teachers, students, everybody, we're so excited about this contract.
So I guess it's, I agree, like, I don't wanna take stuff away.
My, my point is that I think even though it's, you know, an administrator position and people say that's the easiest thing to cut, it's just, it's so, it's so important for this five, you know, five grade, such a, such a volatile age of mix of kids and.
We unfortunately found out where our, where our line was.
Yeah.
And Danielle, the administrators miss you on the safety committee. But they're doing good work on the safety committee, we've got a good safety committee that you helped start.
And unfortunately, what the administrators do, because it's, it always comes up, is well, why don't you cut some more on the administration? And unfortunately, a lot of what happens at the administration, nobody ever sees, you saw it, because you were here. But, you know, you never know what the next phone call's gonna bring, what the next fight in the hall is gonna bring, things that, you know, you go into work with a plan and at the end of the day, you haven't done any of it because you've been distracted in so many different ways. So it's hard to, you know, to just keep telling people what, how important the administrative positions are.
You just never know.
So, I, one question, before, it has to do with this, so before, before.
I'm sure there'll be extra questions, we'll need to move to the next agenda item.
So, because it's such an important and essential and immediate situation that we're in, does it make sense to have Charles be here in the middle school helping Sharon until such time as we find somebody?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and he does, but the problem is he's part-time, 'cause he's retired, so I'm looking for, yeah.
Well, I'm saying, should we be putting him in an interim, interim position to have that extra, be that extra person until?
Until we get somebody, absolutely, yeah.
So, that would be my question.
That's great, thank you, I appreciate that.
So the Band-Aid before the Band-Aid.
The partial Band-Aid.
We're building all kinds of metaphors tonight. Alright, so, members' comments and questions? Melvin tonight, the, okay, Bethlin?
I'm gonna say it really, really fast, I went to the Discovery Museum series speakers about.
Oh, that thing you emailed us about.
A crisis of self-reliation and how to help. And what was very encouraging about it is that she particularly spoke about the green book, the. Thank you, yeah. And essentially those, those, the book review we did and the stuff that we're, we're, are, we're bringing into place was things she was talking about, she's like, this is just a different generation of kids. And the stuff that we used to do, you just, we recognize it just doesn't, it doesn't work the same, what worked for us in our generation isn't working. And there are good results that she said, and she did a lot of research and interviewed a lot of people and wrote a book. And so that's the bottom line, is that a lot of what we already have on our minds, the growth mindset, those are all things that she alluded to and just did a kind of general overview. And I knew more because of our conversations and because the work, the direction we're going in, in the district and with the professional element and that we're. So it was, it was actually really great in that way. So, that's it.
Just at, at the last meeting, we talked about the safety committee was gonna come and do an update, and I know we had an awful lot on our plate tonight, but I really would like to have them.
They will definitely be at the next meeting, we were gonna put them on this meeting, we said, you know.
It's just too much, yeah.
Yeah, there's so much on this one.
It's gonna be ten o'clock before we get out of here.
Yeah, tonight's a long one.
Mary's gonna turn into a punk.
They're definitely on it, though, they know, we know we're gonna be on it doing a presentation and they're excited about that, actually.
Thank you, that's it.
Yeah, so, it's not so much a question, but a, a series of well wishes, good luck to everybody that's involved in the senior project showcase tomorrow. And more importantly, the leading the nation celebration, I wish I could join you. Unfortunately, several members of my team have already taken the liberty of calling out sick tomorrow, one for a house closing and one for a good news.
You don't mean sick, you mean that they've taken their appropriate.
I, I, I'm old school, everything's a sick day, whether you put in the personal day paperwork or whatever, but, so I won't be able to, to make it, but, um, good luck tomorrow. I hope everything goes well and everybody can see all the good stuff that's happening.
Also, if you're not able to come tomorrow, Monday night is the senior project exhibition at the high school. So come to that and see.
Oh, that's gonna be great.
What the seniors have done, it's amazing, amazing, amazing work.
Motion to adjourn? Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Good night, everybody, thank you.